Good morning and welcome to the October 24th Business Meeting. And I'd ask the County Administrator to please take the role.
Yes, Chair. First, our staff support today. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel; Kevin Moss, Clerk to the Board; Commissioner Humberston is out of the office today and will not be in attendance. With that, roll call. Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Please join me in a flight of allegiance.
Flight allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And first off, I'd like to announce that the Board recesses as the Board of County Commissioners convenes the Housing Authority Board. Also introduced our Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
And with that, what's up?
First is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
All right. Thank you, Administrator Schmidt. On today's agenda, we have approval of early work amendment number one for the elevator repair and additional pre-construction phase services for the Hillside Manor renovation, and that concludes the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Would any Commissioner like to remove this item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move or approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second. We share. It's okay.
Approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Turn the mic on. Okay, thanks. Thank you for coming today. Appreciate it. And I'll announce that we are adjourning as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. And up first, we have citizen communication. Garrick Latta, you're up first, and Michael Hall, please come up. Michael?
Good morning, Commissioners. Here to talk about the Northwest Natural Gas Line installation on Ritchie and Kilsa Road. I live at 28752 Southeast Kilsa Road. My name's Garrick Latta. Ritchie, when the project was originally approved, there were supposed to be road closures. The traffic department pulled the road closures back, so it's been open traffic. When they just switched to Kilsa Road this last week, to get in and out of my house takes about 20 minutes now, so I've been having to leave to pick up my kids and drop off my kids and having to add an extra 20 minutes each way. This last week, the enclosure moved to right in front of my house. I had people turning around in my driveway all day long. They were going up 287th. Somebody backed into my gate, knocking the gate off the hinges. I contacted Michael's, the company running it. Derek, the line foreman, came up, that's running the project, helped me hang the gate back up and explained to me that the traffic department had pulled back the closures. I contacted Duffy with engineering and then Christian in traffic and explained to them what was happening, you know, with the community, just how difficult it was with the traffic crossing through and the road closures in front of our houses. They've made some calls. I made a call to Jim, to Commissioner Bernard, to talk with you. Your staff called me back. I just received a call back from the traffic department, and they said now they're considering a road closure starting next Monday. They said they still have a few hoops to jump through. I just wanted to come down and express my support for the full closure, just allowing access for employees and for residents. On Friday this last week, I had a dozen employees that were late to work because they couldn't get in. They were stuck in the traffic. And then, you know, when they tried to take a lunch, they were late back from lunch because, you know, they were trying to get back in as well.
Did you fire them all?
No. I mean, I'm trying to work with everybody up there. You know, they're doing the best they can to let residents through, but when they let residents through and they don't let other people just cutting through, I mean, you can see people getting irate at the flaggers when they're selectively letting people pass through. So I just really would like to express my support to go to a full closure just for residents and employees for the area.
So when you said you called traffic, are you talking about ours or Northwest Natural?
The traffic for Clackamas County. That's where Duffy referred me to for this portion of it.
Yeah, that's my secret way to Sandy, and I went to do it the other day and had to turn around at the pumpkin place and go back the other way myself, so.
Yeah.
Well, great. Thank you for your support.
Where is this again?
It's on Kilsa Road and Ritchie Road.
Okay, Kilsa and Ritchie, got it. Thank you.
Leopold's Berry.
I want to commend the staff for listening, you know, when I called in, and, you know, they were great, and they called me back and have definitely kept me in the loop, so thank you.
Great. Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. I have a letter to read here. Chair Bernard and Commissioners, Clackamas Climate Action Coalition, CCAC, hereby submits two documents for your review and inclusion into the design and development of the Clackamas County Climate Action Plan. Together, these two documents represent our vision of a broad, inclusive process to create a climate plan for a sustainable future. The Climate Action Plan Recommendations Document defines areas of the county's business that we believe must be part of a comprehensive plan, including, but not limited to, agriculture and food production, forestry and timber production, land use and transportation, and energy. The Process Strategy Recommendations Document lays out a process and suggestions for involvement from the broad range of stakeholders and citizens represented within the diverse geographic and economic landscape of this county. CCAC stands ready to participate to the fullest extent possible in the development and implementation of this plan. We agree that it is essential that the Commissioners set the intention and expectation that, going forward, climate impact considerations be prioritized in all county decisions. Furthermore, in our opinion, as the climate crisis unfolds and deepens, any climate action plan that falls short of establishing clear, specific action steps and completion dates would be a waste of precious time and taxpayer monies. That's the letter. I'd like to acknowledge the authors of the two documents. One, Elizabeth Glaser Lindsay is here. The other, Nate Ember, is working today. Would also like to know that CCAC is planning to invite each of you, as well as Gary, to an event that we're going to be holding here in Oregon City on November 20th. It's a climate update event. Love to have you there. And want to make one comment on the, is it called OGLO? I don't know if people are saying Oglo or Oglo.
Oglo.
Whatever, on the bridge. Really good article, I thought, in the Clackamas Review this week. Got me thinking about ferries, because that was mentioned. Seattle is moving to electric ferries with all the ferrying they do in that region, so it might be something to look into.
They have an electric ferry already.
Yeah?
Yeah, the ferry in Campy's Electric.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Thank you. I didn't know that.
We pay, we got a million-dollar grant, I think, to put an electric motor on that thing. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
Ernie Platt and William Gifford.
Yeah, I think they're going to speak to the President.
Oh, the specific issue. Okay, Les.
Good morning, Les Poole. I live here in Clackamas County. We should all be outside. It's September. It's definitely September out there. You're looking at me like you don't believe me, sir. It's September. Just look at the weather. A few things. One is that I spent a few days on the road recently, and in my travels, volunteers handed over to me thousands of signatures for IP-10. I'm a co-petitioner to get that measure on the ballot in November of 2020 so that we can vote on the plan to toll us to use existing roads. I want to reiterate that we are not here to ban tolling, much like urban renewal, or a gun, or an automobile, or elected power. Tolling is something that can be abused, and I believe the vast majority of Oregonians recognize that's exactly what's going on here. And tolling to pay for infrastructure, to pay for new capacity, is currently a legitimate, legal-approved means of financing projects, and certainly, I'm not opposed to that, and our measure would not affect that. But our measure does require a public vote on a plan to charge tolls and put the money into this mysterious vague pit, and I call it a pit. My friend calls it the pit of despair. And where that money goes and what happens to that money, and what we get in terms of value and return for being punished, and I use the word punished to use existing roads, it's a very specious, very troubling situation. I will just say this. I hope that all of the folks watching and that the folks here in Oregon, especially in Clackamas County, where we'd be dramatically affected by this, take the time to go to votontolls.com and download and sign the petition. Sorry, I can't give you a free stamp. You'll have to buy your own stamp for that, but please do that, folks. Let's get this on the ballot. As recently as a few months ago, I've heard from all of the Commissioners who were opposed to this idea, and I hope that you remain steadfast there. Without a surprise, I can tell you that Metro thinks it's a great idea. And Metro is in a situation where they're beginning to lose favor. People are beginning to understand that the loss of local control and that the domination of land use and transportation planning by an entity that's incredibly political, incredibly partisan, is not the answer for our future. And I want to share with you something real briefly. I'm almost out of time, but we don't have a big crowd, and I'll be quick. Home Rule: Part of Oregon's Heritage and Future. This is an article in Local Focus, which is a quarterly, I believe it's a quarterly, that's put out by the League of Oregon Cities. And this article was done in 2015. And the director, the executive director, Mike McCauley, writes, "The Legislative Assembly shall not enact, amend, or repeal any charter or act of incorporation for any municipality, city, or town. The legal voters of every city and town are hereby granted power to enact and amend their municipal charter, subject to the Constitution and criminal laws of the state of Oregon." I share that with you because it was published a short time before the disincorporation vote in Damascus, and it was clearly targeting and clearly stating that there's an Oregon law here that applied to Damascus, and the legislature intervened, and now we've got the conundrum. Well, as much of a conundrum as it is, it's really not that complex. It's actually quite simple. We're in a situation where it's likely Damascus legally is still an entity, and Damascus will be continuing at some level, and who knows? Maybe there'll be another legitimate vote, because obviously, the last one wasn't. So it goes back to the message of the state legislature is not the answer. The state legislature is constantly being drug into these things, and they keep writing these laws. And what we see is, of course, the original problems don't get addressed. So I'm very concerned about what happens in Damascus. I'm not all excited about it being a city or not being a city, because the growth, the issues, the pressures are there regardless. But no matter what, I would hope that the situation is resolved soon, and I'm not a betting man, but the court may just rule in favor of this law that I just recited, and that means Damascus will be here in the future, and then we've got lots to sort out. So thank you for your time, as always.
Thank you. All right, so we're done with citizen communication. We're going to move to a discussion item.
Yes, Commissioners. This is a resolution supporting the Sunrise Gateway Corridor to improve transportation alternatives, increase safety, reduce congestion, and anticipate equitable economic and residential growth for the region. That's a mouthful. This is about a resolution for your consideration. Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, will present.
Thank you so much, Gary. Good morning, Board. We are here to stay true to our word. The discussions that we've had throughout performance of Clackamas and our commitment to the community and being transparent about our objectives, we have a clear objective within that document. And recent discussion through the Board's retreat actually developed more refinement to that, and I'd like to read that out loud. By 2024, Sunrise Phase Two will be scheduled for the federal, state, and/or regional funding within the next five years. There's consistency and consensus around that measure. And what the Board has asked of staff was to put forward a resolution that allowed us to be clear with our other regional partners about our commitment to this particular project. With that, I present to you, for your consideration, the resolution. It is clear in the fact that it is supporting a growing area. It is a desire to provide holistic systems. It is a desire to increase safety and multimodal connectivity in and around that particular area of our county. I would also like to highlight the fact that, within your packet, I believe you've all received information from Clackamas County Business Alliance. We received a letter dated October 24th, 2019, from Nellie DeVries, from the executive director of that agency or that alliance, in support of this resolution as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Oh, I just, so I think you introduced it perfect. And there's, I had a brief conversation with the Chair prior to the opening of the meeting, and so you said that, you know, by that particular date, that we're seeking state, regional, federal funding for this project. So there's nothing in here that's beholden or definite on the T-2020 thing. It's, you know, that's our goal. It's the Board's goal. It was done in the retreat, and so on. So I'd just like to change or add one word on the now there for, bullet number one, and that is, it says to obtain funding. It probably should say to obtain full funding. Can't build it otherwise for the second phase of the Sunrise Corridor between 122nd Avenue and 172nd Avenue, regardless where the funds come from. If they come from partially from one source or another, or multiple sources, that's fine. There's nothing in here that's specific to the regional funding measure that's on the ballot, but if that fails or it doesn't come forth, then we need to make sure that we've got the balance of funds. So with that, I respectfully request we just add the word "full" between the word "obtain" and "funding," because otherwise, we can't build it and meet the Board's goal.
Yeah. I guess, you know, after thinking about this a little bit longer, I could probably agree to that. I mean, our goal is to build it. You can't build it without full funding, and this has nothing to do with the T-2020, but it does send a message. And so I think I can support this. So Paul, entertain a motion.
Okay, so we'll have public comment, so I just want to make sure. So I move that we support, let me just grab the notes here. I move we approve the resolution supporting the Sunrise Gateway Corridor to improve transportation alternatives, increase safety, reduce congestion, and anticipate equitable economic and residential growth for the region. And with the amendment of adding the word "full funding," or the word "full" between the words "obtain" and "funding" on the now there for line one there. Also, I just want to just speak briefly to the merits of this project. I know, I want to just put it in context, we are not building a freeway. Unfortunately, I think there's a misperception out there, and I want to highlight that, under the whereas's, the second one in particular, this highway ranks in the top 10% of most dangerous highways in the state of Oregon by ODOT's ranking system, and safety's a big issue. We have some low-income communities, trailer parks in particular, on the north side of 212, and a considerable amount on the south side of 212, and a huge housing development on both sides of 224 at the Rock Creek Junction, where there's a lot of children and kids and so forth that, you know, and adults who wish to, who could ideally walk safely to the other side of the highway where the parks are, where the new Fred Meyer Shopping Center is, where the schools are, and there is no safe means. We have parts of the shoulder of the road that are less than an inch, and there's no bike path, there's no way to safely walk through there. So this is extremely dangerous, and I think that this project offers transit options because we'll have a safer shoulder if we implement bus-on-shoulder. There's a number of things, but particularly, the fourth whereas, 14,000 jobs and 14,000 housing units in light of the housing homelessness situation we have, this really opens up the door and the gateway for that. So I just want to just speak to that, and that's my, I made my motion, but I just wanted just to add that.
So, Sonja, would I say something then? I think that before we vote on this, maybe we should ask the Citizens to make comment.
Oh, yeah, that was going to be my suggestion regarding Paul's motion, is to hear from the Citizens. I personally don't really like to say to fully fund, because I think that, I'm a type of person, type of leader, that does what I say I'm going to do, and I am not comfortable at this juncture stating that that, that I will agree with how it is written, because I think it's as important, I think it's an important value. Happy Valley is developing. It's got its urban renewal district that we helped facilitate by making them commit to 7% of that increment going into affordable housing. That area's going to be developing. We really need to not create bottlenecks and more congestion that actually contributes to climate change. So that's where I am, but I can be convinced if William Gifford is going to come up here and talk, and Ernie Platt, they are two of my greatest advisors. If you really think otherwise, I may be persuaded to go the other way. I would also like to hear from Les on this, and I'm not sure if you're planning to come up and talk, but I would love to hear your perspective as well. So with that.
Well, Ernie and William, come on up. Les, do you want to speak on this? Okay. But I gotta take three minutes away from you because you were. Ernie, you're up first.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here this morning on behalf of the North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce. So simply want to remind you, as you know, well know, North Clackamas Chamber represents 500 businesses in Clackamas County. We absolutely support the economic development of a county and encourage county Commissioners and Metro and the T-2020 Committee to support Sunrise Phase Two Corridor. Funding for this Phase Two Corridor will support 13,000 residents who are currently underserved and in need of safe connections to get to and from school and work. Investment in the Sunrise Corridor will bring as many as 14,000 new jobs in the Rock Creek Employment Area on 172nd, the Province Medical Center project, and job growth in general, as well as affordable housing options that will be made possible. Sunrise Phase Two is instrumental in supporting the economic vitality of the Clackamas industrial area, the region's most robust job corridor, and transform Highway 212, which is from a dangerous state highway into a safer connection for people and accommodate additional housing. Let me just state, I think, what is the obvious here, and we all know all too well. This particular transportation corridor is absolutely essential to the movement of freight and goods from Clackamas County, from the Portland metro region to central Oregon. And it is the access to our premier vacation getaway in Clackamas County, but serves all of Oregon, Clackamas County, and the Portland region. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I urge your support of this resolution. Thank you.
William. Thank you, Ernie.
You had an extra 40 seconds. I'll take those. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. Yesterday morning, at the Economic Development Commission, we had a little discussion about this particular project, which inspired me to come this morning. Also, I'm a Director of the Oregon City Business Alliance, and although we didn't have not taken a vote on the issue, it's pretty clear to me that the feeling of the Board of Directors is to support this. And thinking about this this morning, I'd like to say that I really think that it is incumbent upon the Commission to encourage funding, and I will say full funding. Again, I'm not a halfway-type of person, so I wouldn't want to say, yeah, let's just do a little bit of it. It's, and I don't mean to say it's all or nothing, but it really is all or nothing, because it's hard to build just half a highway. I think it's incumbent upon you to encourage funding sources, such as our good friends at Metro, who are partners in planning for the region. And as I understand, this project is part of their comprehensive plan, as well as the county's comprehensive plan, coupled with the logic that, and a large investment has already been made in this project, to let that investment go fallow seems not fiscally sound to me. So I would, I would just speak and say, I would encourage the Commission to support this measure. We need to get that done. I'm not going to belabor all the whys we need to get it done. You all know that, but I think it's important for you to make that statement. Next week, you're planning for a commission meeting on Halloween Eve? I might want to consider rescheduling that. It's a little non-sequitur there. It's non-sequitur.
All right. Thank you. Oh, yes.
I didn't address, yeah, I'll use Russell Williams' sign. I didn't address Commissioner Fisher's question. I would support, or do support, adding the word "full" in there, and then I put the spin on it. That doesn't mean full financing from any one particular source.
Good point.
I think it might well happen. The way the first phase is, is it ends up being multiple sources, when added together amounts to four.
And that's clearly the intent and the opportunity, the way it's written, so there's no mention that it has to be from one source or another. So thank you. Thank you both.
Yeah. Thank you. Les? Oh, wait, excuse me. Martha.
It's okay.
I think Martha wanted to address maybe something one of you guys said.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for coming forward, because I've known both of you and Les for quite a long time, and this project has been on the books since time immemorial. And... And, you know, and again, I'm dating myself here as maybe knowing the skeleton's in the closet, but I do think it's a very important, it's very important infrastructure for that area because of the high growth, and I think that, given the fact that we are also dedicated to sustainability and, you know, and those things that we can build, you know, a corridor, it's not a highway, that will serve the people out there, and we will do it well, and we will do it in a way that provides equity and access for the people in that area. So, for me, it's also that is a real component of having that corridor there because we have to get ahead of the growth that we're going to, you know, experience, and we have to do it right. And we have the ability and the knowledge and the expertise with our staff, who are consummate professionals, to work with our partners in the region to make that happen. So, thanks for coming forward.
Excuse me, Commissioner, if I could use my other 40 seconds here. I was not arguing on the importance of the project. I think that case has been made. I'm arguing for the importance of making a statement to support that project.
Yes, thank you.
See that as a difference.
No, okay.
Thank you. Les?
Les Poole. I got lost in that math. I don't know whether I get like 40 seconds or eight minutes, so.
Time's up.
I'll make it about two. I'll make it about two. I appreciate the Chamber's endorsement, and I look at a resolution as a statement of our intent. It's not an official document in terms of, you know, we're not borrowing money here, we're not bonding, we're not voting on something. We're really making a statement of intent and aspiration, and while it's not a substantive change in wording, I do support the amended language. I think it really helps send a message that we want to fully support or fully fund this. And for those that don't know or haven't thought about where this is, because we call it the Sunrise Corridor, all you need to do is drive out Highway 212, and when you get to 224 and 212, the split, 224 goes to Carver, and 212 makes a dangerous wind up the hill towards 172nd where all the growth is. And I fully support the project and obviously support the resolution. And this is one of those cases where I agree with Metro, and I want to make that real clear. Even Metro's with us on this. Couple of quick points. While I've heard a lot about concerns about the local community and walkability, the growth, the jobs potential, somehow that can get, that can get to be such an emphasis that we lose sight of the fact that this is a connector, that we have a distribution-based economy, that we are wasting so much time in traffic out there that it's unacceptable. And the reason it's unacceptable isn't so much that Les has to wait in traffic, or that someone has to struggle with getting home, it's the effect on our commerce. And Phase One is already done. I believe if we hadn't built Phase One, Fred Meyers and some of those other great businesses might be thinking about moving. So, this really has a tremendous impact on connectivity in the region, not just locally for us. And as a gentleman said earlier, it's the gateway, not only to our vacation land, but over to Highway 26. And obviously, Highway 26, the sandy area, the Gresham area, is also experiencing the growth that we are. So, if one looks at Highway 26 and the growth out there, south and east of Gresham, and looks at the growth in Damascus, we find ourselves desperately in need of this project. So, I'm all for it, and hopefully we'll see a unanimous vote today. Thank you.
So, would somebody second this, and then we can take, talk about it a little bit?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Now, for purpose of discussion, you know, I've always been in support of Sunrise. The Sunrise project has changed a lot from what it started out to be, and actually, the Sunrise project has addressed many of the concerns of people who opposed it in what we're looking at on 212, some improvements to safety, access, the numerous manufactured home par, I mean, that, two pretty large manufactured home parks, plus another one a little down the road towards Clackamas. You know, my concern is, I hope it is solely funded someday, is that T-2020, which I'm on the task force, went from like $10 billion to $3.1 billion, and then there's money off the top to do the South Corridor. It's not the same $10 billion that we started with. So, Sunrise Phase Two is probably Sunrise Phase Two, but there's probably more phases now than there used to be. I'm also concerned about how it's funded. I think we're property tax burdened here in the metro region, and I'm really concerned about where the money comes from. I know VRF is one of the things that will most likely happen, but we haven't actually heard the funding mechanism yet. So, once we pick these projects, then we have to determine how they're funded. So, I'm willing to fight for Sunrise, but I don't think this is where we get the full funding. This is where we get what we need to facilitate future Sunrise. And I think what we're looking at right now is, will be an easy sell, frankly. We just have to get the money figure up higher and make sure that Clackamas County gets what it deserves, which is somewhere around 20%. And 20%, I mean, there's some crazy math out there, like we were talking about how much time you got, Les. But actually, and I'm not suggesting this, if there's one thing that we, you know, should look at tolling to build a Sunrise is maybe something we ought to look at, but I'm just looking at Les and saying. So, but it has a substantial impact. We built Sunrise Phase One for, to assure that Fred Meyer stuck around a while and that all those distribution centers stuck around. And the other thing that you did mention, you know, I've been in the auto industry my entire life until I sold the property a few years ago. Cars at idle on a freeway pollute more than cars driving down the freeway. There was one study that the guy said that wasn't true, and I asked for the study, but he never gave it to me. But I have actually had a pipe in the exhaust reading the gas that comes out of the exhaust at idle, and I can tell you for a fact that cars pollute more at idle. Someday we'll have electric cars, and that won't be an issue. But even my Prius, after a short time, goes to engine and burns fuel. So, and certainly Paul can agree to that cars pollute more at idle. So, yes, commerce is very important. Sitting in traffic bothers me. I'm glad I don't live in Wilsonville anymore because driving 224 is a nightmare, but that's not the only issue. But the trucks sitting in traffic do slow commerce down. We are very commerce-dependent. Paul?
Yeah, I just want to just speak briefly to the comments that were, that you made, Jim, and I probably don't have much in the way of disagreement. So, the Sunrise Phase One, that intersection there at 82nd Avenue and 212 was considered the most congested intersection in the state of Oregon. And I know that a lot of people wanted to say that you can't fix congestion. I don't think that you can actually eliminate congestion. I don't think that's a practical thing to do, but you can certainly do things to reduce it. There are certainly things you can do to improve safety. And that project knocked it out of the park. That intersection is no longer the number-one most congested. The congestion that was there is eliminated, and the wasted amount of fuel that there is undeniable. And anyone who drives a car, owns a car, and documents their gas mileage, and drives around town in a congested area can document their gas mileage. And if you get on the highway in a more smooth, on a vacation or wherever it may be, or going down I-5, or get out of the metro region, when you get out of the metro region, my car, the gas mileage improves by 20%, 25%. And I have a modern car, it's a 2019. My other car, prior to that, 2010, everyone, anyone who does the math, has got a gasoline-powered car, can realize that when you drive through a congested area, your gas mileage goes down. But think about the gas that is wasted, whether it's idling, or whether it's bumper-to-bumper, it's accelerating, stop, go. It takes a lot of energy to get a car moving again. It's a dynamic, it's an energy user, and that's where the savings come in. That's where the CO2 is reduced by the fact that you're burning less fuel. So, that intersection, and that we remedied in Phase One, done that, and not only have it improved commerce, and it did a lot of things, including safety along that area. I think what gets lost is, is that a lot of people, either they don't have the experience of ever owning a car, and they don't understand that dynamic, or perhaps maybe some people are motivated to say, "That's bad, and this might be more money for a project in my area" by maybe attacking a project that someone is there. And I think there's a little bit of that going on in the environment on this committee that my friend Jim here is sitting on that T-2020 Committee, because we've heard some claims from the public that are just without merit, frankly. I mean, I'm not saying everything they've said, but there's some things that are, there's without fact, there's no fact backing that up. But let's just realize one thing, and this is something I've said for years, and I really believe this. The future is not gasoline-powered internal combustion cars. The day is coming. We have auto manufacturers that are ceasing production of internal combustion engines. Electric is the future, and hydrogen is the future to some degree. So, we've got to realize that whether it's autonomous vehicles or whatever, they're going to be on the road. There needs to be capacity to carry that, and if our population wasn't growing, we probably wouldn't need this. But the population is growing, and it's expected to grow. Those are Metro's projections. We need to accommodate that basic infrastructure. We had, last Thursday, we had, at J-PAC, we had a whole bunch of people come and fight or argue that ODOT's CBOS program, which is basically auxiliary lanes, shouldn't be pursued. They just completed a project on I-5 which had beyond expectation fantastic improvements and benefits. They exceeded the expectations of that project. That's, you know, and the next one is Rose Quarter. That's being fought, okay? But oddly enough, on I-205 in Multnomah County, the CBOS program that's currently underway, no one's fighting that. It's in Multnomah County, but there's no one arguing against that. So, it's hard to balance what's going on there, and perhaps the issue really is at the Rose Quarter and the school that's nearby there, that there's some arguments about that. But I would argue that if you had smooth flow in there and your cars weren't idling, that the air quality actually gets better. That'd be my argument, and at some point in time, the vehicles going down the freeway are a majority-electric, if not all, at some point in the future. I just wanted to say that there's an issue with that. The other issue, just on the full funding thing, just briefly, it's foolish to build a part of a project and not punch it through and build the complete project. We've already cut this back several lanes, so we are, it's a minimal project that has the opportunity to grow. But I don't think the public should be supporting stranded investments where you don't complete the project. So, I think we've got to look at a package. If we build a smaller project and it doesn't access or punch through that area, that obstacle of the Rock Creek Bridge, for example, doesn't get to 160th where a hospital, they want to build a hospital where the jobs are, then we haven't completed our mission. This is incredibly important, and I guess for the safety issues as well. How else are people supposed to get to school? How else are people supposed to get to the parks that we're building? How else are people supposed to get to the store? And if we're telling people to get out of their cars and bike, there better be a safe path. This project provides that safety.
Sonya?
So, thank you, Advisors, William Gifford, Ernie Platt, and Les Poole. So, I really like what Ernie had to say about the, to obtain full funding from a variety of sources. Is that how you would claim that? That's what I would feel comfortable supporting in an amendment. So, I guess I would like to make a motion that we amend for that, and if we have a second, then I'm good to proceed.
Well, I'll second that because I don't think it's possible to get funding from one source. So, I would, so, further discussion on the amendment?
So, how would that read?
To obtain full funding from a variety of sources for a second phase of this.
Just adding "full," you said "full funding from a variety of sources." I'm good with that. Do you want to?
Well, it's actually embedded in there. There's, it doesn't say anywhere where it's a single source. I'm just trying to figure out how you say, when you say "several," and let's say you say there's two sources, and you say "several," or you say "a variety." I don't structurally know. I mean, my legal counsel, our department had Dan Johnson for words there that are, at least in our language that we use in the industry, for the proper wording.
Gary has his light on, so.
I just have a recommendation, Commissioners, not to add that language because it limits yourselves, because let's say at the federal level earmarks come back, appropriations. This could potentially be funded by a federal appropriation fully. It's possible.
But the Sunrise Gateway isn't just a single project. It's a variety of projects. It has to do with 212, it has to do with the Sunrise. So, you know, this, let's say the T-20 provides funding for one portion of the project, and you know, I think you're a dreamer. I mean, the chance of the federal government stepping up and funding a full project is like, and you know, frankly, I don't know that we want the federal government to fund a full project because they, the requirements of a project like that are massive, and they would never do it. They'd always require matching, wouldn't they? So, you can say, you know, it could be a match of the county, it could be federal dollars, it could be state dollars, but they're still going to require a match of some sort.
I just suggest that full funding covers it. It funds the project.
And it's self-def, and actually frankly, everything we do is not, never really funded from one source. We're always putting in some of our own money. We always are finding other monies to do that. So, these projects are patchwork together, and you know, so, I agree. I agree with Gary. I agree with the administrator on this one.
Well, let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. Wait, her amendment was?
Oh, my amendment. We just voted on my amendment.
No, we just, she amended your amendment, so we've got to vote on her.
No, you can't vote on that unless the person who made the motion accepts the amendment. I don't accept the amendment.
So, let me, and let me just say where I'm thinking. This is a political document. We just went through this with the courthouse. There gets to be concern about how things are funded. People might think, "Oh, we're going to cut other areas to fund Sunrise. That's a major priority." I just think being clear that we are partnering with our state and regional and federal partners on this type of a major endeavor is really important because this is beyond Clackamas County. This is a regional project. Even statewide, when you talk about, as our articulate constituents express today, moving freight, it's a very important corridor. So, making sure that we are partnering is important in the way that we state it, and that would be my reason for wanting to clarify that this is not a complete-only Clackamas County project, which, you know, and I do WordSmith. I read things. I think, yeah, you could imply that, yeah, it could be other partners, but it could also say, "We are going to do this come," I want to swear, but I'm not going to. You can fill in the blanks. Blank or high water. And I just want to make sure we're communicating to our constituents that we are working collaboratively on this project.
So, you know, I agree it's a regional thing, but that's not the way people think. It is not. I've never heard a single person say, "This is a regional project." It's always a Clackamas County project. So, I don't know that that argument works.
So, well, actually, I agree with Commissioner Fisher. I think, in that agreement, I think the second bullet addresses that. It says, "To work in partnership with Happy Valley, the Oregon Department of Transportation, i.e. the state, and metro." It says just those things.
Then maybe just put in there "to fully fund." Maybe we say that. The Sunrise Corridor. We're working in partnership with all those entities to fully fund. Then I'm good. Get rid of bullet number one.
Well, we're definitely in the weeds. I agree with you. I, I, I agree with the administrator. I think the wording is, is correct, uh, with the amendment. So I, I just prefer we, we just vote, or we, actually, we just did vote on it, actually, because that was the amendment I made, and I heard four ayes.
And would you accept the amendment? No, no, no. First, her amendment, we, we need, she made a motion.
Well, I think technically we voted.
Well, I've, technically, we mind.
Technically, we voted on my motion, and we all voted yes, but.
Well, the motion, motion is not a motion unless the person who made the original motion accepts the amendment. I did not accept the amendment. So technically, the motion passed.
No, I'd say we need to vote on the, your motion.
It strikes me as there was some confusion, as.
Yes.
So, for, in the interest of clarity, I would recommend that you do dispense with the motion that is on the table, which is Commissioner Savis' as amended. The original, original language with the full inserted, that is the motion that is on the table for consideration. Commissioner Savis is also correct, that were there to be an amendment to the amendment, the original amendor would need to accept it.
I did not.
That has not been done yet. So I would say, in the interest of clarity, I would revote on what the motion on the table is.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not clear as to what the suggested language is, and I, but I am clear with what the exist, the amended language as suggested and agreed with by the administrator is. So I stay with my motion. Let's vote on that, and if it's negative, then we'll talk about some clearer language. But it's not clear what the amendment is.
As the word "full" was your motion.
That is correct, Chair. What I have is, as amended by Commissioner Savis, is to move to approve the resolution supporting the Sunrise Gateway Corridor to improve transportation alternatives, increase safety, reduce congestion, and anticipate equitable economic and residential growth for the region, with the inclusion of the amendment under number one, under the therefore to obtain included "full." The word "full" funding. That is the amendment that was passed by, um, it was moved by Commissioner Savis, seconded by Commissioner Schrader.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Um.
Oh, Martha, hey.
It's okay. I think we're overthinking this. I'm just, got to be honest. Because, because, um, I, I'm not sure we need an amendment now, because we've made it perfectly clear as, no, no, truly, as a legislative body, what our intent is. This is on the record, it's public record. So, six of one, half dozen of another at this point. And I, I agree with Gary. I want to support my administrator in this, and, and if you're okay with that, I'm, yeah, I'm fine.
Just drop the "full."
Yeah, I'm okay with proceeding with it as written. That was what I was prepared to do today. Okay. All right.
So, so let's vote on Paul's motion, then. That's what we need to do.
Let's just do it. It's okay, we're done.
I'm perfectly fine with the original.
So you're, you don't want to add the word "full"?
Well, we haven't voted on it yet, so let's find out.
Well, actually, I think legal counsel said we did vote on it.
No, he did. He said there was some confusion.
Yes, he said it was confusion. So, um, I, you know, my motion is there, so I'm.
Right. Let's vote on it.
Let's, let's vote on my motion as amended. I mean, that was my motion. It was the motion with an amendment.
Yeah. So, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. So it's two?
Two.
I, I liked it the way it was.
Yeah.
And until I got in here, Paul hadn't suggested it, and, and I'm perfectly fine with saying that we're sticking with the original motion.
Well, it's, it's.
I thought that's what you were saying.
I, I'm.
I, I'm, I think, I think we're trying to honor the intent of what we agreed on at our retreat, and that's our goal. And I think, as Dan stated, it was perfect. Unrehearsed, maybe, I presume, but perfect. I think he nailed it, and I think the administrator's comments were perfect. I mean, our goal is not to obtain funding, our goal is to build the project. And, um, so if, if, uh, uh, full, if half the funding doesn't build the project, the project doesn't happen, so you don't accomplish the mission. So if there is a, if you're, if there's a proposal to get funding from half of it, then there got, it has to be a proposal or a, a path to the second half of the funding, for example. And so this, this will maintain that we seek the full funding, whether it's from one source, two sources, or three sources.
Okay, so we already voted on this, so we need to move forward.
So I'll make a motion that we support the resolution as written.
Any further discussion? I think the history, the legislative history.
We're making it very clear.
Definitely affirms that we want full funding, and that we want it done by 2025.
So just clarification, we are voting on the document.
As is.
As is. Okay. So, all right. Thank you.
And, by the way, uh, you know, we were, we talked about this, I agreed to this, and, and until we got in here, there wasn't any changes. So, so I think for public purposes, this has been out in the public, we had people come to testify in support of it, and I think we have to support it as is, so.
And they all supported out of the word "full," every one of them.
Who's in favor?
All right, so with that, all, all those in favor of the, uh, this would be funny, I can't wait to see how you vote.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, clarification, so.
We're voting on the.
I know, but I, I want to clarify, Commissioner Savis wants the word "full."
Right.
Out of there. Is that correct?
Yes. That was his motion.
And Commissioner Fisher indicated she wanted to hear from the people testify that if they supported that, and they did.
So, okay, I am with Commissioner Savis on this. I'm okay with that language being added. So we add a, are we at a loss now, or?
So we already voted on this, so you want to do, you want to make a motion again, and we'll vote probably two, two?
So, okay, so you will vote no, Commissioner, if the language is not, never mind, never mind.
We don't know how he's going to vote.
I made a motion.
And it's been seconded.
So let's vote.
And it's the document that is in front of us now?
That's correct.
No changes.
With no changes, that's correct.
I, I'm afraid that our conversation, just this conversation and difficulty is going to send the wrong message. I, I really am.
Okay.
And if you, and I, I'm going to support the motion with, with the reservations, but we're on the record, and I think this is the, I think this is the wrong message.
Okay. All those in favor of supporting, uh, supporting the resolution as written, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Harry, none? Did you want to comment?
I, sure. I, I'm, I'm very concerned about, uh, the, 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 seemed to be a, a step, stepping back of the project, and what we did at our retreat. We spent two days at our retreat, and this, this feels like a step back.
Okay, I, by the way, I wanted to mention something while we were discussing this, but I had an opportunity to go to the polling meeting. Uh, it was very interesting, the, and actually, it says in this little flyer here, um, where is that? That, uh, the polling indicates that congestion is the primary concern of the region. Uh, it was something really high. I don't know why this is so hard to find, but, just a second. Seventy-two percent of the people said, "We need to work to address worsening traffic and reduce climate pollution." Seventy-two percent. Um, even though we, at these, uh, meetings, uh, have had a lot of people testifying that we shouldn't build any more roads, obviously, the public thinks that we should, um, build more roads to reduce congestion. Also, the survey said that ninety-two percent of those surveyed were extremely or very concerned about homelessness. And I think that's important. And, uh, uh, traffic was the second most important issue to voters polled, with seventy-one percent viewing it as extremely or very important. Just thirty percent say the region is heading in the right direction, which I, I, this told me a lot. And I put some of these stuff, this stuff on the, on my Facebook page, because I think it does send a, a different message than we have been hearing. Paul?
Yeah, Dan, I know it's not in this resolution, but, um, if I'm not mistaken, the project as we last saw it, or I last saw it, indicates that this project as defined here from 1/22nd to 1/72nd, uh, does reduce emissions.
Yeah.
Yes.
Point one.
So it, it accomplishes, it accomplishes the region's goal by reduction, but, in an overwhelming way, it increases the, the safety issues.
Yes.
Strikingly. And I think to, to not, not complete that project is ridiculous. And if, if, I think my concern here is, from the, from what I heard at the, the, the event that was held at the Abernathy Center on, at, uh, on Tuesday, that Metro put on, my concern is that we're going to build half a project. That doesn't get to that emission reduction, that does not get to the safety issues, that does not meet the board's goal, and we've watered that down today by this discussion.
So I disagree.
As do I.
I, I, there's nothing in here says that we want half a project.
So, so Jim, are you going, are you going to fight for full funding for this project?
Uh, I'm going to fight for as much money as we, we can get, our share of the money, even if you, so, so first off, we don't know the total. If it's three point one, and a billion goes to South Corridor, that doesn't leave us enough money to build this project, unless we took everything off the top. Yes, Dan?
For the sake of discussion, we are not here talking about T-2020. We are going to have a policy session with you next week, and we are going to share with you all the information from that policy session. There is an intent, purpose, to not craft this resolution around one funding source. The discussion was the fact that we don't want to limit any options that we may have to fund that project.
Okay.
Um, it doesn't get into the full, or half, or part, but it says, we want, as we said, we want to look at everything that we can do. We have built these in the past. I will show a great example, it's Phase One. Phase One came to be because we became proactive, and we went out and secured willing seller, willing buyer property.
That's exactly.
That is what got ODOT's attention. That is what got that funded. Any project that we do, um, the nuance of the words that you're looking at, you look at a discussion around funding, usually it's a partnership, number one. Number two, you look at that on the words around phasing, what is Phase Two? What are parts of Phase Two? There are always a suite of projects that go into mega projects of this nature. So there are a variety of ways to look at this particular project. Um, and we will be coming back to you and sharing all of that with you in a discussion of policy session next week.
So thank you. Yes, Paul? I will fight for full funding of the Sunrise.
Okay. And I appreciate Dan's comments. I wasn't intending on bringing up T-2020. Commissioner Bernard opened that door.
And thanks for clarifying that. Appreciate that. So I will fight for full funding of Sunrise.
Okay.
And just to help support Jim on that, I just want to point out that, as I understand it, Portland's going to get virtually every project they wanted in, in the Tier One.
So you're bringing back the, uh, the T-2020?
We'll see you Tuesday for a lively discussion.
Yeah.
All right, Sonya.
Well, no, I just want to say that I'm all about quality of life, and making sure that we do everything we can to look into the future and preserve that. And it's very clear, if you live in Clackamas County, that we cannot have the kind of congestion that the development of Happy Valley is going to bring. So we are aligned in moving forward, and so I just want to clarify that in case there's any question.
Yeah. All right. Okay, thanks. Uh, the next item is consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On today's consent agenda, under Health, Housing, and Human Services, we have a resolution approving the Clackamas County Social Services Division Title VI Civil Rights Plan for Transportation Programs, approval of a local grant agreement with Totos Hutos to provide kindergarten readiness partnership and innovation services, approval of a local grant agreement with immigrant and refugee community organization for kindergarten readiness partnership and innovation services, approval of a local grant agreement with Metropolitan Family Services, Inc., to provide kindergarten readiness partnership and innovation services, approval of Amendment Number Three to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through the Oregon Health Authority for operation as a local public health authority for Clackamas County. Under Transportation and Development, approval of contract with Nutter Corporation for the Southeast Caps Road cul-de-sac construction, authorization to purchase quantity fifteen Dodge Chargers for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Under our Finance Department, approval of a personal services contract with DePaul Industries to provide security services for Justice Court, Juvenile, and Circuit Court. Approval of resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget, less than ten percent for fiscal year 1920. Approval of resolution for Clackamas County for budgeting of new specific purpose revenue for fiscal year 1920. Approval of resolution for Clackamas County for a transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 1920. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, and approval of a resolution for a boundary change for the area formerly known as the city Damascus for the administration of Advalorm property tax system. Under Business Community Services, approval of a loan agreement with the State of Oregon and Business Development Department to support the Clackamas County Land Bank Authority. And finally, under Technology Services, approval to purchase ACED backup data storage and annual support and maintenance from CDW slash G.
So I have a, two questions. Probably should have asked these ahead of time, and I know one of them's easy. I assume the sheriff's Dodge Charger, that's not, that's for the sheriff's department, it's part of his budget, right?
Uh, that is, it's part of the transportation development budget, because it's under fleet now, under DTD. So I understand it's been budgeted.
Okay.
This is your final approval, since it's over the amount that department directors can sign.
All right. Now, can you put that back up?
Yes, I can.
I think the last page. And that's not the last page, is it? Oh, I wanted to mention the Damascus boundary change. So, uh, we've been ordered by the court, correct me if I'm wrong, to draw a map according to what the boundaries were at a certain time, and that we turn that over to Metro to, to draw the map, correct, of Damascus boundaries?
I'm always reluctant to correct the chair, but I would say we haven't been ordered by the court. I will say that Senate Bill 266 said, before the Secretary of State can ratify the vote of the residents of Damascus from 2016, she must find that the vote happened, that the city surrendered its charter, and that there has been a boundary change submitted to the Department of Revenue. You are the local boundary commission, and in order for this condition to be completed, we need to have a legal description of Damascus that it existed in 2016, which we have. We also need a map of the boundary of Damascus as it existed, which we do have. You will approve it today by way of your resolution. We will forward it to Metro, and Metro does assume the responsibility of effectuating boundary changes with the Department of Revenue, and they will submit it to the state. And were the Supreme Court to uphold this legislation, the two conditions that were required would have been fulfilled, because the charter has already been surrendered to the county.
And, and so this does not impact anyone this year in the tax for property taxes. It could affect them next year.
I.
No?
That's a no from Bronson.
So the property owners that have been annexed to Happy Valley, get what tax rate? I mean, is it, what rate are they paying?
They would be paying the city tax rate, I presume, the city of Happy Valley tax rate. This is not a taxing component. This is kind of like a, uh, uh, housekeeping type of component, yeah.
I, yeah, that's what I just wanted to.
Your, your acts today will have no impact upon any tax amounts for any affected properties.
Because you already got it in the mail. Paul?
Yeah, so, Chair, you drew my attention to the, um, the fifteen cars. My question to the administrator is, I'm looking at the price of that, and that seems, well, on one hand, a lot, on the other hand, not complete or incomplete. So do we have an idea what the, as it says, aging vehicles? Um, I drove down, is it Abernathy Road? I forgot the wor- the, uh, Abernathy, yeah, where the fleet vehicles. And I noticed a lot of cars out there that seem to be sitting out there. Do we have an idea what the age of these vehicles are, which ones are replacing? And then also how much it actually costs to make all the adaptations? I'm sure that doesn't include all the computers and, and rigging, and I know that's inexpensive. So I'd like to get the full cost of that, and, uh, do you have any answers to any of that, Gary? It's 'cause it's not in the packet.
I don't have any answers to that. I, I do know, I did speak with the, uh, undersheriff, and that it's not necessarily the age of the car, it's the mileage on the car. Obviously, our sheriff's deputies use those cars much more than the average driver does, and so the cars wear out much more quickly. So it's not the years that the car's been in service, the amount of mileage and usage the car gets. But other than that, I can get that information for you. I don't have it right now.
I don't, I don't wanna impede, I don't wanna impede anything if there's anything that's time-sensitive, but the same token is, I wanna just get an idea of what we're doing with the cars that are not being used that seem to be piling up there at that site.
Okay. We'll get that information.
So you're not asking to pull it?
I'm not asking to pull it, but, you know, I, I would just ask that, you know, before we actually go through with it, to get some answers to those questions, please?
Yes.
All right. So we haven't voted on it, so all those in favor of the consent agenda as is, say aye.
Mr. Chair, one second. No one has made a motion on it.
Oh, I thought somebody did.
Good catch, Kevin.
Okay, so I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. I guess next time I'll ask the question after we make the motion.
That's okay.
All right. With that, I, uh, we got, uh, Commissioner Communication. Paul, you're up first. I'm late for an event already. You probably are, too.
Are you? Am I? Oh, that's right. We're not, we're not late, are we?
Yeah, well, I had eleven.
The event starts at eleven, the lunch, the, the registration and social is at eleven, the lunch and the program starts at twelve.
Okay, well, if, if all are willing, uh, then I only have one thing, and that is, Chair Bernard and I spoke earlier today. I wanna just get clarity that, uh, tomorrow morning, when I go into the Oglo Bridge meeting that we agreed upon last week, is basically condensed into this, this which I'll read tomorrow, and I'll just read it aloud, and Chair Bernard asked me just to read it. Uh, at this time, so here, I'm gonna start now. At this time, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners would like to narrow the three Oglo Bridge study options to one preferred option. We are not prepared to discuss feasibility of a bridge until we have that preferred site identified. Additional public outreach and community participation must be conducted to determine the location of the bridge, and once the location is determined, further community participation to determine the level of support and impact a bridge would have in the affected communities. The Board, Board of County Commissioners has made it clear that transit on the bridge is not an option, and the bridge should be designed to accommodate emergency vehicles under twenty thousand pounds.
Okay?
Yeah, no, I think that's really good. The only thing that I don't know that I think a study would determine is if a bridge can be built with no additional cost with the future of if they wanted to do, make it bigger. I don't know what that would mean about anything, but if it were to be built that way. I mean, right now, there's no way, transit. But who knows what the future will be, and don't wanna foreclose possible, possible, um, needs fifty years from now, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, there'd be a different bridge.
Yeah, so I just don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's my only thought, is maybe not to be quite so strong on that one little statement, but I'm right, I think that's very well done.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll present it tomorrow as is. Thank you, and I'll share that concern about the future.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna forego my comments.
Okay, forego our comments?
Nope, I have some comments.
Okay.
Sorry, but I have prepared comments.
Oh, and Gary has.
Oh, and Gary does. Yeah.
For my update, I just have one, but it's, I need your, I need your input. So your evening business meeting, earlier last, last year, you agreed on the months that have five Thursdays, the fifth Thursday of that month, you would hold an evening business meeting. October has five Thursdays, so the fifth Thursday is next Thursday, October 31st, which is also Halloween. So the question is, you talked about that already this Tuesday, but I've had more feedback. Do you want to change the date of that evening business meeting or not?
Yes.
Mr. Les Poole, he sent you an email, which was, it somehow didn't get to you. He, and he's been a great advocate for evening business meetings. He's asked you to reschedule that event on the 31st. Obviously, a lot of people with families want to be with their kids on trick-or-treat. It's a tough night for people to be out in the road, and we may not get the turnout we would expect on that evening. However, there are only two other meetings the rest of this year where all five of you are present, and that would be on Wednesday, November 27th, the day before Thanksgiving, when you have rescheduled your business meeting. You could do an evening business meeting that night, Wednesday, November 27th, or your final business meeting of this year, Thursday, December 19th. You could have that as an evening business meeting. I am asking you to reconsider your decision to keep the meeting and consider rescheduling for next Thursday, but we really need your input now.
Yeah.
Well, as we discussed Tuesday, um, and I don't have people's names, but as, but even last night, uh, people have saying that they wanna talk to us, and I, I've been sharing for a long time, well, we've, don't do night meetings, and these people work, so, you know, that, that's the awkward part. You know, I think it's gonna make us look kinda bad for the people that I've conveyed, you know, even last night, that, you know, your opportunity is, for a night meeting, or for, that, that fits your work hours, is, is gonna be this, this, tonight, or not tonight, but next Thursday evening, as awkward as it is. And we spent all year saying and agreeing, even though I, I was hoping that we would do not the fifth, it was not, I, I, I voted for it, but I didn't, I, I had reservations. It was not my idea to make it the fifth, but we, we knew that a long, long time ago.
Yeah. Well, I would suggest that we move it. I'm okay with either suggest a date, or I'm okay with chairing a meeting if, I know Commissioner Bernard, or Chair Bernard had some Thursdays that he would not be available, but I'm happy to step in as vice chair to accommodate public comment. I would prefer that we do it sooner than later. Um, that would just be my preference, and happy to step in his chair.
So let me look at, uh, next Thursday. Actually, I may have been confused.
Okay.
I'm good for next Thursday.
Well, you know, um...
Next Thursday is October 31st. The following is, it's C4 is that night, Chair, which you co-chair C4. You don't have to be at C4.
Yeah, that's right.
November 7th would be that date.
It, it's my recommendation, if, if there's a majority of folks who wanna cancel that, you know, I've cut reservations, but do that, but let's not try and schedule it now, because that's a big change, and I've, I don't have everything on my calendar, but I, I don't think now's the time to, uh, to pick the night.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we only have two choices, so...
Well, it doesn't have to be the third of anything.
Right. So the question for now is, do you want to still have an evening business meeting next Thursday, October 31st, or move it back to the morning? Although I will tell you, all five of you already have a prior commitment now for 10:00 AM next Thursday, which we would have to cancel. That's a, we, that's not a, we can change that.
I say we take the meeting. I'd make a motion that we remove it from Thursday night on Halloween.
And, and go to 10:00 AM on Thursday.
Or go to 10:00 AM, or whatever our administrator would recommend.
I have an Oglo Bridge tour, but I could, I'm sure, reschedule that.
We could make that later.
All right, so let's, uh, the motion, is there a second? I'll second it for discussion. Uh, the motion was to move the, uh, October 31st meeting from the evening to the, uh, normal 10 o'clock. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
We made promises. I'm gonna, um, just for saving face, I'm gonna, I don't know how to contact all those kinda people, but I'm gonna vote no.
Martha, where are you?
I'm an aye with this. We'll just change it, or, okay. I'm okay to change the date.
All right. So the meeting is at 10 o'clock.
Back to the daytime, we'll, we'll schedule an evening business meeting before the end of the year, and we'll work with your calendars to make that happen.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And is there, is there some way we can get something posted out?
I will post.
It's part of our regular notice, yes. We'll let everyone know.
But even on our internet, maybe even a little extra, because I, I...
Due to Halloween.
Yeah, due to... I hate to put our commissioners in a bad spot.
We'll figure, yes, we'll give extra notice to those who were expecting it would be an evening meeting. We'll get full notice out in all our channels.
Okay. All right, with that...
Okay, wait, don't adjourn. I have my Commissioner Communication. It's not, it's gonna be quick.
Well, there's still three of us.
Yep. Okay, so I wanted to share a little bit about this week and all the things that we've been doing, unless I'm happy that you're here for Commissioner Communication, because you're a big part of the, um, my process of thinking about how we conduct ourselves as county commissioners. But we were here at this forum, at the, at the Get Moving 2020 Transportation Forum. I was there mostly in the back of the room, hearing comments and concerns from folks, um, a lot about the Oglo Bridge. It's come to me that how critical our communication is with one another and with our communities in regards to our role as ombudsmen. And I, um, I'll take you on to the next slide, Kevin. I remember back when we, I was brand-new commissioner, and we were out at the Stafford School, listening to community concerns, and we worked really hard to create an intergovernmental agreement that would allow input from all of the partners and how to shape that future. That really struck me this morning, and we, I took this picture this morning when I was on my walk. This area is on Burgess Road, looking out over what is now going to be in our urban reserves, and you look at how incredible that space is, and how critically important it was that we listen to our community in regard to what is so important to us. So I was at the 2020 hearing forum. I've been talking to people in the community. I've heard all kinds of things about the idea of this bridge. I've heard things like, well, we can't have, literally, I've heard this, people with, uh, purple hair coming over into Lake Oswego. I've heard we can't have tents of hobos underneath the bridge. I've heard we, it's going to destroy our quality of life, it's going to destroy our parks, it's, and I am really leaning in and listening to every single concern, because you know what? There are tents under bridges. There are tents underneath our Oregon City Bridge right here. There is concern about community and connection and wanting to keep things the way they are. And so I am listening. I am really, really listening. And at the same time, I realize we all have information that other people may not have. Just on our Tuesday policy session, we heard, or I learned about what's called PFAS, which is polyfluorocarol substances, and they are in our environment. Greg Geist came and shared with us that they're in our groundwater, they are contaminating our water system, and they can cause, they may cause serious health effects. So before I was a commissioner, I didn't know about this. This was news to me about this, so I've gotta learn about it, we've gotta make decisions about it, we have to be the leaders, which means sometimes we have to be the ones that educate, because we aren't here just for right now. We are here for ten years from now, twenty years from now, thirty years from now. We are here for our children, our grandchildren, our grandchildren's children. And so with that, I had a special moment on Sunday. I go and I have, try to have dinner with my daughter Christine every Sunday, and when we were having these moments together, I was telling her about her grandpa, Poppy. Popo, 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 is what I was whispering in her ear. She listens very intently, because Poppy now is, um, has Alzheimer's, and he is not able to always remember everyone, he's not always able to, um, communicate, and it's, it's becoming more and more challenging. And she doesn't get a C, popo, popo, as much as she used to, but she sure remembers him, and she smiles and remembers. And Christine's mental capacity, some of you may not know, she has Angelman Syndrome, her mental capacity is fifteen months old, but I tell you, we talk, I listen, she listens, and we have deep communication. I am so proud of our commission, because all of us care, and we have our ears open, our hearts open, we care about the people that are in our community now, and we're looking forward to the future. And so with that, I know I have got a tour on the, for the Oglo Bridge tomorrow. I'm gonna look at every site, I'm gonna look at every point of it, I'm going to listen to the policy members, I'm imposing myself on this project, because community is important, livability, quality of life, the future, and the now. So with that, those are my comments.
Well, those are gorgeous pictures. That's very nice. You need to take those and, um, have them up and frame them in your house, because that was absolutely stunningly beautiful. It's a woman who has two daughters as well, to see a mom with her daughter, and the love in your eyes was just amazing to see. Bless your heart. That's just great. So I've had an interesting week. I'll try and be quick here, sorry, Jim. I recently, uh, I recently, you know, everyone know I had entomology roots. Well, this week, I had my dear friend from Mississippi State University, Dr. Richard Lee Brown, who is the Giles Distinguished Professor, and he studies microlepidoptera. What is that exactly? Uh, he's a moth specialist. And the microlepidoptera, there aren't very many people that do it, because they're so small, but, um, I did have him take a look at our pollination piece, and he made some notes on that. And, um, it was just very, very lovely, uh, to have him here and to actually remember all the insect orders, because I'm kinda rusty at being an entomologist. But in any case, that was great. The other thing is that I'm coming to a close with my position on the Association of Oregon Counties as president. Come November, I'll be handing the gavel over. I'm really hopeful I'm leaving the organization in better shape than it, when we started. Um, it, it has been a challenging year, and I wanna thank my colleagues for allowing me to take the time to move from what I love best here in local Clackamas County to actually do some work at the state level for all thirty-six counties in this state. So, you know, I'm kinda, kinda feeling the burden beginning lifted from my shoulders, but I will still be involved as the past president and the future. Okay, I'm just gonna do the word of the week now.
And thank you for your service from all of us. We appreciate it.
Well, I might be able to have a better night's sleep after it's over, I have a feeling. Foliage, noun, a cluster of leaves, flowers, and branches, the aggregate of leaves of one or more plants. Facts about foliage. It was first used back in the late 1500s. It was derived from the Middle French language. We hope all visitors that come to the Public Service and Development Services buildings feel a sense of joy seeing all of the fall foliage that we have here on our beautiful Red Soils campus. Um, I don't have a, a slide for arts, but I do wanna mention, Clackamas Repertory Theater is going to be having their interactive children's series in December, on December 7th and 14th. Shakespeare in Love is going to be opening at the Lakewood Theater, November 1st through December 8th. I'm doing the cast party. Get ready for Halloween, because Lakewood is also having its costume shop sale on October 25th and 26th, from 10 to 4:00. So if you really wanna get gussied up for Halloween, you can go there and get your costumes. So, uh, that's it for me, and thanks.
Thank you. I just wanna add one thing. One of the things I have heard, which always disturbs me, is that we don't want those people here.
Yeah, I know.
And that's the purple-haired people, I suppose. But years ago, when we were doing Light Rail, um, the argument was, you know, people would just steal things from around, and I always said, "So some guy's gonna steal your big-screen TV and hop on Light Rail?" No, they've got cars. So, I mean, I, I, certainly there is more crime, because there's more people, but I don't think that the crime statistics have shown, uh, a big growth in, uh, crime. Uh, but we're great people. You know, I don't like to drive on the west side at all, uh, but it's not because of who lives there, and they should not be afraid of us, because we live on the east side. So that, that bothers me, and it's always bothered me. Sometimes I'd just like to build that damn bridge, just so they can, we can prove that we're great people, too. And so, uh, thank you, and with that, we're adjourned.